Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Chairman Jim Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Matthew Mitchell? Commissioner Gabrielle Medley?
Here.
Commissioner David Diaz?
Here.
Commissioner Susanna Ballard?
Here.
Commissioner Joan De Zero?
Here.
Commissioner Paul Laird?
Here.
Commissioner Tiffany Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner Lonnie Stevenson?
Here.
Commissioner J.P. Thornton?
Here.
Okay, the first item on today's agenda is the election of officers for the upcoming year for the commission. We'll start with the election of the chair. Do I hear any nominations? Ms. Ballard?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jim Harris as continuing chairman of the commission.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Wow, okay. At this point, what do I do? Call for a vote? Kelly?
Can I make a nomination?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to nominate David Diaz.
Any other nominations? And at this point, what do I do? Just call for a written vote or a... How do we do it? Got two candidates.
Yep, so I would start with, I mean, obviously, everyone's aware that there's two candidates, so have in mind who you'd like to vote for, then do a vote for one and see whether it passes or not. I mean, does everyone kind of understand what I'm saying? So, kind of know who you want to vote for. So, he'll say a name, and then all in favor, you'll vote yes or no for that person, and we'll see how that, if that passes or not. We don't have two very often, so...
I know.
I don't know that there's a set process for two, and so...
Do you want, maybe do a written vote?
I mean, whether we do it written, if we do it written, then we have to do it where you write your name down. It can't be anonymous in any way. So, if we do it in some kind of written way, we have to read it all in the record.
Okay.
So, you can do it that way, but we're just going to read it out, so...
All right, let's just start off by all those in favor of David Diaz. Do I just individually?
Yeah, because we're probably not going to be able to use the electronic vote, so...
Okay, Shelby, would you just query everybody? All those in favor of David Diaz?
All those in favor of David Diaz?
I was going to have you do it individually. Ask everybody individually.
Yes.
Leaving me for last.
We'll just go there. Joan De Zero?
Aye.
Paul Laird?
Aye.
Susanna Ballard?
No.
Gabrielle Medley?
Aye.
David Diaz?
Aye.
Tiffany Wilson?
Aye.
Jim Harris?
Aye.
So, motion passes six to one.
You have the gavel. The first thing I'd like to do is, first of all, thank you guys for your confidence in my running as the chair, but I also want to thank Jim Harris for his years of service, and I think he gives a round of applause for his years of service. And he's done a great job as our chair. So, this is a, first of all, any correspondence and announcements from the...
Mr. Chairman, maybe?
Oh, we have to talk to Vice Chair. I'm sorry. Okay, do I need a, I need a motion for a Vice Chair? Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Harris?
I'd like to move that, or nominate Ms. Medley.
Okay, we have a motion for Ms. Medley as a Vice Chair. Anyone else?
I would like to nominate Paul Laird.
Okay, we have a motion for Paul Laird, so we'll go to the same, anyone else? So, a motion for Paul Laird and a motion for Gabrielle Medley as Vice Chair. We'll do the same procedure. We'll do Gabrielle Medley first.
Aye.
Paul Laird?
Aye.
Susanna Ballard?
Aye.
David Diaz?
Aye.
Jim Harris?
Aye.
Tiffany Wilson?
Aye.
Gabrielle Medley? Motion passes six to one.
Okay. Congratulations, Gabrielle.
Mr. Chairman, you do need to ask her, though, if she would accept.
Do you accept the... You don't have to. It's up to you. It's no big deal. Okay, she accepts. Thank you for accepting, and thank you guys for voting. At this time, the next is minutes of the last meeting. Correspondence and announcements.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner members, thank you very much. Update from the previous council meeting, they did approve the Park Avenue Plan Development rezoned, that mixed use and restaurant use, with the Planning Commission's recommendation. It was approved by a vote of four to three. And that concludes staff's correspondence and announcements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to this proceeding. This is... I'm going by this. So, is the minutes next? Okay, any minutes, please? Any approval of the last minute?
I move that we approve the minutes.
Aye, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Harris and a second by Mr. De Zero for approving the minutes from the last meeting. We'll take the vote.
I think since we had the other voting, that it's kind of made my voting a little upset here. Yeah. So, if we can just do a voice vote? Should I read that out individually for this one?
No, you can just say all in favor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Minutes have been approved. Okay, this is a public hearing, and there is a structured order to the proceeding. The city staff will present each item. There will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceedings to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone in the public that wishes to speak, limit their trips to the podium and microphone to only one, keep all comments to less than five minutes, and to stay on point and does not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the public motion back to the table for the city staff's recommendations, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually, a motion to approve or disapprove. Okay, the first item is ID 23-3899, request for preliminary subdivision plat for Luxe Locker Sweetwater Avenue, storage condominiums at 3204 Sweetwater Avenue, tract 2289, block 6, portion of lot 2, creating a 48-unit storage condominium subdivision in the general commercial slash planned development C-2-PD district staff.
Thank you, Chairman. The subject property is located on Sweetwater Avenue between Oro Grande Boulevard and Osborne The property to the west is zone general commercial district and is currently a vacant lot. The property to the east is zone residential multifamily planned development district and is developed as a multifamily complex. The properties to the south are zone residential limited multifamily planned development district and developed with single-family houses. The development district, to the north, across Sweetwater Avenue, is Arizona Highway The site is currently being developed into a 48-unit storage complex that is under construction. The proposed condominium plat will convert the units into condominiums and allow them to be individually owned and included as part of an association along with the common portions of the development. The project includes 48 storage units, common shared area for ingress egress, maintenance and operation of utilities, sewage, drainage, refuse collection, and emergency vehicles. In November 2021, the city council amended the development code to no longer allow storage units in the C2 zoning district. However, on December 14th, 2021, this property was rezoned to C2 PD with the exception to allow storage units, so the storage unit use is allowed. The project will have a property owners association to manage and maintain the association improvements. Common area will be privately owned, and the water and wastewater within the subdivision is installed and maintained by the association. This concludes staff's presentation. The applicant is also available.
Are there any questions of staff by the commissioners on this item? Mr. De Zero?
Chair, I just wanted to clarify, so, this has already been approved. The only change to this is they're now going to sell them individually instead of one person owning them and renting them out to people.
Correct. The zoning's approved. This is just to condo them out.
Any other questions? Is the applicant present, like to speak on this item? Please state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Lee Johnson, APL surveying, J.O.H.N.S.O.N. Good morning, commissioners. Congratulations, Mr. Diaz and Ms. Melanie, on your promotions. I'm just here to see if you guys got any questions. Staff explained it really well. It's just an existing project that's being converted to the condos for change of ownership.
Any questions from any commissioners? Okay.
Thank you.
This item is, oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. This item is also a republic. Any public want to address this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask for staff's recommendation.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of Land Use Action 23-3899, a preliminary subdivision plat for Luxe Locker Sweetwater Avenue Storage Condominiums at 3204 Sweetwater Avenue, tract 2289, block 6, portion of lot 2, creating a 48-unit storage condominium subdivision in the general commercial planned development district.
Right, looking for any other discussion or motion for this item?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Harris?
I move that we approve action item number 23-3899 with staff's recommendations.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Second by Ms. De Zero. Let's call for the vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, congratulations. Next item is ID 23-3895, request to amend the parking in common master plan for 2905 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2211, block 2, lot 9, removing the property from the master plan. Mr. Hearns, your presentation, please.
Thank you, Chairman. The subject property is located on Maricopa Avenue between Rolling Hills Drive and Melrose Drive, an alley abuts the rear of the property. Highway 95 is to the south across Maricopa Avenue. The subject property and the abutting lots to the west and east are zone commercial Southgate District and developed as commercial uses and some vacant lots. The properties to the north across the alley are zone residential Southgate District and are a mix of vacant lots and residential developments. The original parking in common master plan for block 2 includes lots 1 through 24. The lots in this block are 250 feet deep. The parking in common master plan calls for a 10-foot landscape buffer along the Maricopa Avenue and a 120-foot front parking setback and a 20-foot rear parking setback from the alley, resulting in a buildable depth of 100 feet. Other properties within this block have already been removed from the parking in common master plan. Lot 16 through 24 were removed from the parking in common master plan to allow sales displays in the parking in common area. An advantage of being included in the parking in common master plan is that development and redevelopment need only comply with the parking in common master plan rather than the parking requirements of the development code. However, all uses within the parking in common block are to share the parking with no spaces being reserved for any one business or use. The applicant's letter of intent requests to amend the parking in common master plan by removing the subject lot from the plan to allow outdoor display and provide the required parking for future development. If removed from the parking in common master plan, all required parking for any proposed uses of the properties shall be provided on the subject lot, and the spaces may be reserved for their customers and employees. Use of the parking in common area on other lots is not allowed. Any new structures will still be limited to the 100-foot buildable area of the lot as shown in the parking in common master plan. Design review for development code compliance, including driveways and parking standards, will be required before building permits are issued to develop the properties. A parking in common amendment application requires initial agreement from a minimum of 75% of the owners of properties within the block. The applicant submitted approvals from eight of the 10 property owners within the parking in common block. Staff received no objections to the request from any reviewing agencies. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is also available, or is also present.
I have one quick question. You said you received eight out of 10 approvals? Was that what you said?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from commissioners to the staff on this item? Okay, seeing none. Is the applicant available? Answer. Like to make a presentation or ask? State your name and spell your last name for the record, please.
John McKenna, I'm the sales manager for this area. Last name is M.C.K.E.N.N.A., and I'm just here for any questions that you have. I don't really have a statement.
Okay. Any questions from the commissioners to the applicant? Okay, seeing none, thank you. It's also a public hearing. Anyone from the public want to address this issue? Seeing none, I'll take it back to staff for your recommendation.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of Land Use Action 23-3895, an amendment to the parking in common master plan for 2905 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2211, block 2, lot 9, removing the properties from the master plan with the following conditions. Design review to ensure compliance with all applicable city codes, including driveway locations and parking, is required prior to development of the properties.
All right, at this time, is there any more discussion or a motion from commissioners on this item?
I have one. I have one question.
Question by Ms. Ballard?
If you can go back to the area map. The access, that's good. One more the other way. One more. It's showing the access loss of Maricopa onto the parking in common as an opening. If you eliminate the parking in common for this property, how is the access to the parking in common for the remainder of the properties accessed?
So, this is looked at in design review. We would be with Public Works Department to ensure that each property has access. We wouldn't eliminate access from one property or the other. In this particular case, the owner of the parcel owns that piece as well, so that would make it easier for future development on a entrance.
Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, we're looking for a motion? Anyone? Mr. Laird?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd move to approve Land Use Action Number 23-3895, an amendment to the parking in common master plan for 2905 Maricopa Avenue, tract 2211, block 2, lot 9, removing the properties from the master plan with the following conditions. Design review to ensure compliance with all applicable codes, city codes, including driveway locations and parking, is required prior to development of the properties.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Medley? Call for the vote. Thank you. Congratulations. Next item for up for discussion is ID 23-3912, request for a text amendment to city code Title 14, zoning development code, section 14 dot O4 dot O2 dot C. Parking requirements, amending dwelling, multifamily parking standards, and how fractions of parking space calculations are rounded. Mr. Chris Gilbert, your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This is my first presentation to you since I came on board last month, and happy to be here. This particular item was reviewed in depth by this body on April 19th and May 17th. The city council looked at this and decided to unanimously recommend a specific path, and so, this briefing today is going to be considerably limited from the last time you saw it. With the increased number of multifamily developments within the city, the city council requests the planning commission to review and discuss the parking standards for multifamily zoning and forward its recommendation. Of course, the commission reviewed the standards at its April 19th, May 17th, 2023 meetings, and forwarded a recommendation to leave the parking requirements unchanged. However, city council reviewed the planning commission's recommendation at its July 25th, 2023 meeting, and following extensive discussion, the council voted unanimously to return the direction of planning commission to hold a public hearing today to amend these parking requirements to the standards that previously existed in 2016 based upon the size of multifamily unit. And that's the size of unit that's involved. If it's a mix of units, it would be broken out to the appropriate segments. Additionally, the city council directed rounding up in all cases on fractional parts of spaces and to retain the covered parking requirements. So, what does that mean? Well, the current standards in RUMS and MUUMS districts are one parking space per unit. All required spaces must be covered in all our districts, and this is for multifamily units. One space per dwelling unit containing one or fewer bedrooms, one and a half for those containing more than one bedroom, and additionally, one space per five dwelling units for visitor parking, with at least one space per unit being covered. The previous standards, which is what the city council asked this body to review, is one space per unit for efficiency units, one and a half spaces per unit for one bedroom, and two spaces per unit for two bedrooms or more, with a minimum of one space in a garage carport. Now, the condominium development part was not included in the recommendation. Guest parking is to be provided a ratio of one space for each five required spaces. So, the advanced slide here. This is an important slide because what it shows at the very bottom in the purple is the previous standards that the city council is asking the planning commission to review at their recommendation, and that is 1.5 spaces for one bedroom, two for two-bedroom, two for three-bedroom, and if you look at the average for a number of Arizona cities, that is barely above that average of 1.4, 1.9, and 2.0 for one, two, and three bedroom. And exactly matches Prescott Valley, Flagstaff, and Peoria. So, these standards are not out of line with what other cities in Arizona are presently doing. And if you notice also off to the right on the previous standards, I did line out the required spaces of condo projects, because that's not part of the recommendation. But one guest space per five units, at least one covered space will be retained. So, on the next slide here, on parking space rounding, and there is a little nuance here as well that I'll go over. The current code, rather than rounding up or down, the current code just simply cuts off any fractional amount. For example, if the total number of required spaces was 12.9, then the number would be truncated to 12 instead of increased 13. Nearly all other types of calculations round up or down rather than truncated. City council voted to always boost fractions to the next highest whole number. And I'll get to this on a later slide, but the standard was used for all types of fractions for parking. So, what we're going to do is not incorporate a, we will retain this standard, but for multifamily, it's going to be different, and then in the future, if something else comes up and be different from this, that'll just be confusing. So, I'll get to that in a minute, explain why that's important. And then finally here on the covered parking requirements for RUMS, MUUMS, all required spaces must be covered, and at least one space per unit must be covered in all our districts. That's being retained. So, here's that slide I was talking about. If you notice how it's worded, when calculating parking spaces for any use, requirements for a fraction of a parking space shall be, and striked out, ignored, and rounded up to the next highest whole number being added. And that's for all such parking calculations, for ease of use, rather than breaking out to different, round here, don't round here. That would just become confusing. So, just want to make that clear of what we're doing. And that's 14.0, 4.02 under parking loading. And the only other part that's being modified, of course, is the Table 4.02-1, the minimum required off-street parking, and that is where the one space, 1.5 space, and two space requirements from the old coder being plugged in and the old ones eliminated. So, that completes my review. Mr. Chairman, planning commission, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was at the city council meeting just to comment, and when the public was speaking on this, the two of the big things that came up was rounding that up to the whole, the next whole number, and to make sure that at least each resident had a covered parking space when it was, you know, where it was already in the plans. So, I think the council did a good job on listening to everybody, and it was a long meeting, but I think they made the best choice for everybody. So, any questions from the commissioners to the staff on this? All right, thank you. Thank you for your presentation. Any public comment on this? We're going to open this to the public if anyone wants to speak on this issue. Any public comment on this? We're going to open this to the public if anyone wants to speak on this issue. Okay. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment part. And at this, this is not a, an item that's, we're just, we're just going to vote on this? Is that?
Yes, so now it would be your time just to discuss. And then, yes, there will be a vote thrown.
Any further discussion from the Commissioners on this? All right, a call for a, a motion to?
I'd like to make a motion.
Ms. Ballard?
I move to approve ID 23-3912. Request for a text amendment to city code title 14. Zoning Development Code, Section 14.O4.O2.C. Parking requirements, amending dwelling, multifamily parking standards, and how fractions of parking space calculations are rounded.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. De Zero? Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Ballard and a second by Mrs. De Zero. Let's call for the vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, that's the last item we have for discussion. This is a public meeting. Is there any from the public wants to address the commission on any items, on anything, any subject? Okay, seeing none. Any future meetings by staff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next week at 11:00 AM, on the August 23rd, there's a special meeting. And that is to accommodate the Hilltop application from last week that there was some confusion on the documents they had submitted. They've submitted corrected documents and that they'll be coming back. The reason there's a special meeting is because that will, if, if a decision is made at that time next week, that would allow the application to still make the city council meeting that they were originally scheduled for. And there would not be a significant delay. But they did provide updated drawings, which you'll be seeing as well, which really clarify the extent of the variation in height that they're requesting.
Okay.
The regular meeting for Wednesday, September 6th has been canceled and that's due to issues with the space here. And then finally, the next regular meetings that this board will be having is scheduled for Wednesday, September 20th, and there will be items on that agenda. I don't know what yet exactly. There's a lot of stuff we're working on. But there will be things on that. Mr. Chairman, that's updates to future meetings.
Okay, thank you. With that said, nothing else on the, on the docket, so I adjourn the meeting.